Good evening, everyone. The time is seven thirty. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded. Vice President Ferguson, could you do the invitation?
Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Father God, we just thank you for another opportunity to come together to continue the business of the city. We invite you to enter this meeting as you are the prince of peace. Father God, let us serve wisely and we ask that you will bless all participants in this meeting on tonight, bless our families, our citizens, our employees and all affiliates of the city. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Madam Clerk, do the roll call, please.
Councilwoman Fareed.
Here.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Here.
Councilwoman Hairston.
Here.
Councilwoman Herring.
Here.
Councilwoman Jones.
Here.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Here.
And Council President Curtis.
Here.
You have a forum.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
I have some moves. Second.
Any discussion? Any opposition? Hearing on the agendas hereby adopted.
Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman Hare.
Yes, it is my position.
All right, well. Would you do roll call, I mean, roll call for the agenda, please?
Councilwoman Fareed.
Yes.
Councilwoman Guillaume.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hairston.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haring.
No.
Councilwoman Jones.
Yes.
Council Vice President Ferguson.
Yes.
And Council President Curtis.
Yes. Okay, the agenda is adopted. Madam Clerk, could you read legislation R fourteen dash twenty twenty four?
Resolution fourteen dash twenty four. The sponsor is President Curtis on behalf of the administration. The public hearing was on October tenth, right, and there was a regular session on October sixteenth. And the legislation was introduced on October second. A resolution to approve the appointment of a code enforcement manager for the city of Glen Arden. Whereas the city council approved charter resolution zero two twenty twenty two that amended article, excuse me, Article nine Personnel Section nine oh one, authority to employ personnel that had, that became effective in two thousand twenty two and. Whereas Charter Resolution zero two dash twenty twenty two stated, all heads of all offices, departments and agencies of the city government and all subordinate officers and employees of the offices, departments and agencies in the city government shall, upon recommendation of the city manager, be appointed and removed by the city council. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Council of of the city of Glen Arden, Maryland, sitting in regular special session on the twenty fifth day of October twenty twenty three as follows. One, that James Green is appointed to the position of code enforcement manager of the city of Glen Arden on the recommendation of city manager Bev Havada, based on the code, based on his code enforcement management experience, interview and reference checks. Two, that this candidate has successfully completed the fingerprint background and drug screen and is ready to be appointed to the position of code enforcement manager at an annual salary approved in the FY twenty four city budget. Three, that the city hereby appoints this person into the position of enforcement manager. And four, this resolution till take, shall take effect immediately upon passage.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to bring this resolution to the floor for a vote?
So moved. Second.
Second by Councilwoman Fareed. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Councilman Hare.
Okay, first of all, you don't have a salary in this. The salary needs to be put in here. What is the salary that this gentleman, that this candidate is going to get? Because it's not on, it needs to be in the resolution.
Okay.
What is this, what is the salary?
Sixty eight thousand nine hundred ninety seven dollars.
Okay, and as I've sent out earlier, that is a step thirteen on our pay scale that we actually had developed by a very expensive consultant. Looking at the pay scale that this council approved, he should not be making those sixty eight thousand dollars coming in as a new hire. The, the scale for his grade, grade seven, the new hire range is between fifty one thousand and fifty six thousand six twelve. Why is this gentleman being jumped all the way over to a grade thirteen, which is only four steps away from his maximum for that position? Um, I'm, I'm not understanding that. You cannot sit here and drop this man into a position in, into a salary that is not approved by this salary scale. The scale is quite clear what the new hire range is. And why are we jumping over all these other steps? In order to give him a sixty eight thousand dollar uh increase, which he's going to go to seventy thousand dollars when, in June, when you get a two point five percent increase. So I'm asking why are we violating the rule, the, the pay scale that we put in place? And somebody please explain that to me, why that's being put on this piece of legislation. That was voted on as law by ordinance.
Senator.
Mr. Curtis.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, the answer is, uh, Mr. Green is not a beginner, coming in at the beginning of the pay scale. He has seven years of experience in one of the toughest places for setting up systems and for doing code enforcement in the town that he's currently working in. And uh, his experience in particular was startup of code enforcement processes, including his experience with registration of vacant lots and vacant buildings, startup of rental licensing and um uh code enforcement in general uh for seven years makes him not a beginner. And I don't, do not believe that uh uh that he is somebody who should start out at the beginning of the scale. And in addition, uh, at the moment in time, we need leadership in code enforcement. He can bring that. And finally, I believe that having to compete with his current employer who will want to keep him. Uh, you know, I think a higher salary will keep them from uh being able to compete with the city of Glen Arden. Those are my reasons for the salary level at which he is at because of his years of experience in code enforcement, setting up the systems that we need.
Mr. President? Mr. President?
Yes, Councilman Hare.
Um, that sounds all well and good, but the law that was passed is that new hires, this is a new hire range. It doesn't say beginning. It says a new hire range for that position of a grade seven can come in at the, at the entry, entry level of uh fifty one, or if you feel you got enough experience, he can go into fifty six as a new hire. He's coming in as a new hire. He is not coming in. He is not, he is not an employee already here. He's coming in as a new hire. He's currently making forty seven thousand in Capitol Heights. Um, so a, a twenty five thousand or twenty three thousand dollar increase. That's ridiculous for his experience because he's not worth that much. The, the, the pay scale was, was equipped to have for long term employment in the city of Glen Arden by bringing them in at a fast, at a fast salary, which y'all, everyone said this, this was, this was created to bring the salaries to uh market rate, which is what this new hire range does. And even if he has seven years experience on this, on our uh pay scale, seven years experience in a city of Glen Arden only entitles you to fifty nine thousand four seventy eight. You put him at thirteen years of experience. That's after, you know, with all these steps, I'm just saying, this is, this is absolutely ridiculous and you're not, we're not following the, the the uh pay scale that we paid for and that we approved. And I don't even know if you can legally do this. Because this is, this is ordinance. So, you know, I'm thinking that, I mean, that needs to be looked into. I don't think you can. Um, we said the new hires are coming in at this range and you're going to jump over twelve steps to bring this person in at, at thirteen. And, 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 and what bothers me is that we originally bought him at six, seventy thousand dollars, which he should not have been bought in at seventy thousand dollars because that was the top of the budget item, but the budget line item. And I thought we were not going to be doing that any longer. And that was, that's what was said in the budget discussions, but obviously that's not, that's a lie. We are going to be bringing people in at whatever the budget says it's going to be. So I think before we pass anything, we need to get some clarification on this scale that was voted into, into uh law by ordinance. When we approved that budget, says that a new hire will come in at, in this range. And even if you, and if, and with only seven years of experience, a person would only be making fifty nine thousand dollars. So, I'm thinking, I mean, is, we can't sit here and like Ms. Wilson said, what, so when do we follow the rules and when don't we follow the rules? We follow the rules when they give five minutes, but now we're not going to follow the rules because this is somebody that everybody likes or everybody think they need. And that's another question I have. What is this major emergency that we got to get him on board? Because I know it was a discussion before about looking at other candidates. So what is this major emergency that was, that was talked about in the email? I would like to know what the major emergency is.
Mr. Curtis. Okay, uh, to address the pay scale, uh, the uh pay scale has three parts to it that was adopted. One is at the beginning and then you have a transfer range, uh, which uh then is uh at the, sort of at the middle. Uh, and that transfer range is uh set up for bringing in transfers of staff like police officers who come in from other jurisdictions. This gentleman is coming in from another jurisdiction as a code manager. That's what he is right now at the town of Capitol Heights. So, uh, in terms of saying that he should start at the beginning, I don't think that's a valid argument. In terms of the urgency, the need to bring him in now, we are down to one code officer with uh currently with uh one code officer uh attending the police academy for Anarondo County. And she's not available uh to work here during the week when she's at the academy. So the urgency is to have someone here who can rebuild this uh operation of code enforcement that will fill all the positions that are currently vacant. There are a total of uh four full-time, including the manager and one part-time. The part-time person who has been selected has been waiting and is still waiting, has agreed to come. But I cannot bring somebody on for a part-time when I don't have anybody here to train that person on what is uh needed here uh for the city of Glen Arden. That's my response in terms of the urgency of doing this. You don't have anybody. And right now I've got one person who's working daily and putting in some overtime hours uh in order to keep up with the commercial parking uh violations and the folks who are doing construction in the evening uh who are being uh, you know, followed up on and caught in the act of doing things that council has been concerned about, that evening time when, when after five o'clock people are still during daylight hours doing construction, that we need to keep uh tabs on. And so that, we're down to one person. That's the urgency.
Mr. President.
Councilman Hare.
Yes, because then, then, so then he should not be getting what the city manager just is, 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 is saying he should get. She just said that the transfer section is for those who come in with years of experience. He got seven years of experience, so he should be at a step seven. Technically on this scale. I did not say he should be at the beginning. I said the maximum for the new hire range is fifty nine thousand. I didn't say, I mean, it's fifty six thousand. Even if you wanted to look at the transfer, he should be coming in at fifty nine, which is seven, is about seven years of experience. He does not have thirteen years of experience. We just found out recently that, looking at the uh document that I shared, that, that, the, the code enforcement officer need to be able to read the blueprints for approving uh permits. Does this gentleman read blueprints? I didn't see it in his, in his uh, what you got it? In his qualifications and his, you know, his resume. So I'm just saying again, you just, the ma, the, the city manager just stated about the transfer section and what is there for? And if we adhere to that, then we need to adhere to what, if you want to even get him seven years and he has seven years, he should be right there, he should be right there at fifty nine four seventy eight. I don't think it's right for us to sit here and play around with something that we approved by law and just give somebody a, an increase just because you like them. That's why, and, 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 and that's why, that's why we had this pay scale, so we don't run into these situations where these people get these salaries that, 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 that are not equitable when it comes down to their experience and knowledge. This was, this position was looked at. The, the skill level and everything was looked at. And what really kind of bothers me is that they're saying you're going to bring somebody in here, they're going to look at it again, and then you're going to adjust the, the, the position based on whatever they find out. Who's going to find out something that, and say that they make, they, they do less than what they should be doing to get a lower salary? And who's going to roll that salary back? Nobody. So you bring them in at what the salary scale requires and I, and even at a seven is where he should be, not at no thirteen. For somebody with seven years of experience, should not be at no step thirteen. That, that is not, I don't, and what he does at Capitol Heights, he does at Capitol Heights, that's Capitol Heights. We're not, we're not in Capitol Heights. We ain't going on with a pay scale that was voted on by ordinance, by law, that we as council members need to follow and have to follow. Because violation of the, of, of, of any ordinance in a book in section twenty of the, of the code says that, you know, that's, I mean, it's called infraction. Punishable by, punishable by a fine. We cannot continue to sit there and do what we, what we, what we said is law. And we make the law, so we make the law for the citizens, we make the law for everybody else, but we don't follow the laws when the laws apply to us. That's what I'm, that's what I'm, that's what I'm seeing right now. Because he should not be getting sixty eight, he should be getting at the most is that six, is the fifty nine four seventy eight. And that's, and that's a twelve thousand dollar increase from where he's at right now. And if Capitol Heights outbid us, then so be it. Like Capitol Heights outbid us. There's other people out here. I don't believe in being um technically um intimidated into bringing somebody on because again, Ms., Ms. uh Habata, you bought the, you, you moved the city manager's, I mean, you moved a code enforcement officer under your direction when you came on board. You should have been filling the positions when they, when they were open. Instead of waiting until somebody come on to do that. You're an experienced city manager, you know what's required in, for a city manager, I mean, for a code enforcement officer. You ran Tacoma Park for twelve years. I know you got more, I got enough experience to know what's going on. You ran Capitol, um, Capitol Heights. So you should have been bringing people on once that budget was passed. You shouldn't be bringing that part-time person on.
Mr. Curtis.
If you got, if, if, if he got the qualifications to bring, come on as a, as a code enforcement officer, he should have some qualifications to know what needs to be done. And, and these positions should have been filled. So we're going to bring somebody, we're going to bring somebody in because these positions weren't filled. And now it's almost like a, oh, you, you do it or you, or you're going to be lost um and um and, and please don't tell me about commercial vehicles because I just got finished riding around the city and I see commercial vehicles all over the place. And I'm, I don't know what, what's being enforced and what's not being enforced. But commercial vehicles are not being enforced. There's other things that's not being enforced, you know, so I mean, it's like, it isn't. We're no better, we're no worse off than we were before. So I'm not seeing what, what the major issue is. And if you're going to bring this gentleman on, he needs to be brought on based on this uh salary scale that was approved by law, again, by this council. Thank you.
Thank you. My council vice president Ferguson.
Thank you, Council President. Um, city manager Habata, um, what was the salary that was advertised on the posting? On the, the advertisement for that position and what was the salary that was actually offered to Mr. Green?
Uh, the salary range started out from sixty one thousand and change and it went up to the budgeted amount of seventy thousand five seventy five.
What was offered to him?
Seventy thousand five seventy five.
Okay, um. And that that figure that you, the seventy one, sixty one to seventy was actually on the um the announcement that was uh posted and.
Yes.
Okay, so it, it is my opinion that um I never, never necessarily would agree with the fact that if we have a range, um, a salary range that you have to bring someone in at the lowest. I think, you know, qualifications and experience um does make a difference. Um, I do understand a seven versus a thirteen. I understand all of that. However, um and I understand ordinance and law, but I also know that it was, it was advertised. Um, so you, you're saying that, um, testified that it was advertised, so it was advertised and we can clearly go look at it. So where was our due diligence as a council to question that then? That was there. We should have had it to fifty eight or forty eight or whatever it is. That was there. It was publicized, it was advertised and it was offered to him. Where did we go from there? So, um I mean, again, that, that, I mean, I don't know what I'm going to call it negligence or oversight or whatever, but we have to take some responsibility for that as a council. Knowing that um their, their um salary, salary um schedules. And if that didn't fit the schedule, then it should have been questioned, even if it went down from forty eight to seventy or fifty eight to seventy, but that is what it is. I, I personally do not have a problem with hiring someone if they are skilled um to, to the max of their um their pay, pay scale, and supervisor. And sometimes it happens and sometimes we don't. Sometimes people go to the lowest, but um where do we go in terms of not disputing this then? And this man has been offered this salary. This was there. No one complained about it. I didn't complain about it. I, I will be the first to say, I didn't realize that this was offered. Um, so it was, and it wasn't questioned then. So now we're coming behind it questioning. So I don't have a problem with seven thousand or the fifty, or sixty eight.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice President Ferguson.
Mr. President.
Um, yes, Councilman Hare.
Okay, let me just say this. We hire an experienced city manager and as experienced HR person to advertise what's based on the pay scale that we approved by law. The seventy thousand dollars was not even on the pay scale. So that should not even have been, the, the seventy thousand or the sixty two is not on the pay scale. And we got an email saying that those were not on the pay scale. So the pay scale was not even followed. So the amount that was advertised was erroneous and whether it was, I mean, and it was not legally able to, she was not even legally able to even advertise for seventy thousand dollars because it's not even on this pay scale. We're going by the pay scale that we passed. So again, you can't sit here and, and, and pick and choose when you want to follow the law. The law is quite clear. And again, the pay scale should have been adhered to. It was in effect and it was not. So I'm just saying again, whether, whether we agree with it or whether we, so we do not get the, we do not get the announcements. I know as a council member, I do not get job announcements. That's administration. They deal with that. So I would not have seen it. So that, but I should be able to feel that the people that we have in place are going to follow what we put in law. That's what I should be able to feel. I should not have to be coming here and checking this out and finding out, okay, wow, this is part of the pay scale. And then it was already offered to him outside of the pay scale and now we adjusting it to put it on the pay scale. So how's that making that right? We're just admitting that we made a, that a mistake was made. So again, if he got seven years of experience, he should not be getting seventy thousand dollars. And, and legally y'all cannot, I mean, well, y'all can do what you want to do. And if, and if it's illegal, it's illegal. And if it's trying to take it any further, then they can take it further. But I think I'm going to look into it and um, because I'm, I'm really am tired of things being done and we pass these laws, but then we change the laws when we feel we can't. When we feel we, we want to. But yeah, we hold our citizens to these laws that we want to, want them to adhere to. So I mean, I, I can say again, we could, you can't just can do what they want to do, but I am going to look into this because again, I don't spend all of this time going over pay scale that I had to sit through. We, we generated it, we talked about it, we did this, we did that, and then it's not even being adhered to. It, it, we as council members cannot do that. We took an oath to uphold the laws in this, in this community. And whether, no matter he, whether he was offered it or not, it doesn't matter. He was offered it in error and actually decided it's going down now to sixty eight because they offered him seventy thousand dollars in error. So it is being adjusted. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, um. Vice President Ferguson, final comment to you before we move on.
Yeah, I just wanted to add, notice that um Ms. Schultz is on the line. I wanted to know, um, how did that um salary? How, how was that thing? How did that come about?
Good evening. Um, there was actually an error on the um part of, of the classification plan. And we personally found out about it. We spoke with Dave and Ms. Habata, if you don't mind me saying this. Um, we spoke with Dave. When we originally did the survey for the positions, every employee completed a survey. This position was not on books when we did the survey. The survey was done between Ms. Habata and Dave verbally. When they did it verbally, one of the factors in the survey was actually not given its full weight. That made it a ten. However, it was not caught by anybody until recently. A ten is the seventy thousand seven five seven or whatever it is. I don't have a chart in front of me. So what happened, so we spoke with Dave uh and he concurred that he put the position at the wrong grade. However, by that time, the grade had already, the, the grade had, the position, the classification had already been established at the seven level, even though it is incorrect. Um, none of this we knew about until I've been out, it's been recent and I was given the grade of a ten, even though it's actually the grade of a seven. Or the salary of a ten was actually a seven. So, yes, that's part of what happened.
I have a question.
With that error.
Oh. Go ahead. I'm, I'm sorry, a grade of a ten.
A ten, that, that salary of seventy thousand five, seven five seven is actually on the ten scale.
And it is, and my question is, my question is, on that ten scale, is it on the low end or the high end?
It's in the, let me, let me pull it up. It's in the middle.
Okay, all right, that's, that's all.
Actually, actually, it's in the range. It's in the, 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 uh, the transfer range.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Vice, Vice President Ferguson, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Uh, I was just wanting to get clarity on that. So, so basically you're saying that that it was, it's a typo?
No. What, yes, what I'm saying is when the um developer of the, of the, of the classification system and Ms. Habata were verbally talking and came up with, did the survey, survey verbally because there is nobody in that position currently when the survey was done. He, the um the uh, uh, developer Dave, I don't know how it happened. I, I was on a conversation instead of giving full weight to the community networking, which is a three. He gave it the lower weight, which is a one. And then what the, the, so that's how the job got classified or misclassified, I should say, at the seven, grade seven versus the grade ten.
Okay.
That's.
Has any re, written um correction or anything that's been sent to the city?
We, um, Ms., I'll let Ms. Habata respond to that, but uh, this all came out like real reasons. Because when we asked, we, she wanted to know, Ms. Habata wanted to know, how did we come up with, with the, uh, the budgeted amount as one grade, as one grade and the grade on the classification as another. And that's how it came out.
Okay, I am on my. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Ferguson. All right, are there any other comments from council members before we move on? Any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. One other question. Because I'm looking at the scale right now. So when it was a ten, he was a, he was a step eight. Now, when you move it down to a seven, you make him a step thirteen. And he was in a transfer at a ten, but now he's way outside the transfer when you go down to a seven. You tell me how that makes sense. Then it doesn't. It's just trying to give somebody a salary that you, that they, they're not entitled to. Eight is even more realistic than a dag on Thursday. Then it doesn't. It's just trying to give somebody a salary that you that they they're not entitled to. Eight is even more realistic than a day on thirteen. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilman Gion.
Thank you, Council President. I don't want to prolong this, but I'm a little confused. Is there any way, because we keep hearing scale, scale, scale. Is there any way that? We can share the screen of the pay scale?
Yeah, I've been trying to pull it up, but for some reason I cannot.
Or I don't I don't know if since county, I don't know if others have authority to, like if you can give administrative rights, not rights, but. Can um, for example, Councilman Herring said he just saw, I mean, he's looking at it. Is there a way that we can have him? Or somebody who has it, I don't, not necessarily volunteering Councilman Herring.
Or or uh Council Clerk, do you have it? Or Councilman Herring, if you have it on your up already?
I gave multiple share rights.
All right. That's it. And then I'll I'll give the floor to Councilmember Farid. She has her hand up. Oh, well, uh, Councilmember um. Gion, was that it?
Yes, that was it for me because I just, I do see that there are other, there are citizens on the call as well, and we keep saying scale, scale, scale and things of that nature. So just to be fully transparent. And also to help me out, I um thought it would be fair, it would be appropriate for us to just look at what is being referenced. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Farid.
Yes, thank you, Council President. Can you summarize what the issue is? It sounds like a role was. Posted and advertised at one particular pay grade. But that pay grade is not the actual pay grade of the role per the budget. And the scale. That was passed in the ordinance. Is that correct? Is that what the issue is?
Yes, I have to look at the ordinance. So. We approved and uh Ms. Haber or somebody else can correct or wrong. We approved um. We approved seventy thousand dollars in the budget. That doesn't mean that the person gets seventy thousand dollars. But I cannot recall what grade we approved. I think we approved it at a seven, seven pay grade. Is that correct, Ms. Haber?
Yes, it was approved in the um. It was approved when council adopted the pay scale at a grade seven.
A grade seven?
Yes.
And what is the max on a grade seven?
The max on a grade seven is seventy-six thousand nine thirty-two.
And what amount did we have in the budget?
Seventy thousand five seventy-five.
Okay, so the amount that we had in the budget was within the pay scale of a grade seven?
Yes.
And, okay, if it's a grade seven, why can't we pay the salary if that salary is within the range?
I think uh the point was, uh, Mr. Herring is correct, but that the we should have started at the new higher range. Uh, for the position at fifty-one.
Is the new higher range, is that, or let me just ask this, is that, what's the low end of the grade seven?
Fifty-one thousand two eighty-eight.
And we're saying that a new hire, regardless of their years of experience, would need to start at that fifty-one?
I wouldn't recommend it. You have years of experience, you're not gonna track somebody.
But but is that, is that what the argument is?
Yes, that's the argument Mr. Herring is making, I do believe.
And there's no discretion within that range of the pay grade? To pay within that range? So in other words, is there no room for? Looking at other contributory factors like market conditions, you know, are are. The urgency around the need. Is there, is there latitude for that to be determined? As long as it's within the range? Because I guess that's what I'm 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 not sure what the, what exactly the issue is if the grade is a seven and the. Range for a grade seven is from fifty-one to seventy-six, I think you said. And we're offering this person. A salary within that range. Um, I guess I'm not clear on where we would be violating the ordinance. Maybe and maybe, you know, Council President, maybe that's a question. For Councilman Herring, I don't know, but I'm just trying to get clarity on what exactly the issue is.
Councilman Herring?
Yes. Okay, first of all, Councilman Herring can speak for himself. Councilman Herring did not say he needed to come in at fifty-one thousand. Councilman Herring is saying that, first of all, now that now that he got even more clarification, the position was advertised. And with a grade ten range. And that grade ten range was giving you seventy thousand dollars and you were gonna be a step eight. That's the first, that's the first error in this whole process. Now you 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 realize that. The rate, the 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 grade should have been a seven. So the new higher range is fifty-one thousand up to fifty-six thousand. For a code enforcement officer, and that's that's somebody with five years of experience. So even if you look at the step seven, which is seven years of experience. It only goes up to fifty-nine thousand, which is one step behind where they were gonna put it when it was. Uh, 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 grade um ten. So what I'm saying is that we voted on this piece of legislation, and this is what we said was gonna be the new higher range. He's a new hire. So he needs to be put into this range somewhere on this salary scale as a new hire. And you want to put him at the high end of that uh grade seven, at fifty-six, you could do that. You know, you can even be a little bit lenient and say, okay, he got seven years, let's put him at fifty-nine. But this this whole scale is to is allow people to grow in the position over many, many years, not throw somebody into a thirteen and in four years they they capped out. So that's what the problem is. One, it was advertised as a ten, which was not right. Um, and the salary that was put on advertisement was for a grade ten, which was not right. When it should have been a grade seven. So it was as advertised all wrong. So that's what I'm saying. And that's what, that's where, that's where legality comes in at. If you're gonna pass something in to say this is your new hire range and this person is a new hire. Now all of a sudden you want to say, oh, well, we think you got more experience and we need him now, so we're gonna give him seventy thousand dollars because and we're not gonna. We're not gonna honor what we said we voted on, we were, where we were gonna follow. That's a problem. And even if you wanted to just consider him a transfer from another department, from another agency. Okay, then he would, he would be seven years, a step seven, that's seven years. That's how this should be working. Yeah, okay. That's that's my, that's my issue. I'm not saying he should be at fifty-one. I'm saying you got some experience, you will give him a high, you will give him a higher, you know, the new higher range. But the transfer range, if you wanna, if you wanna be fair about it and say you got seven years, then he should be at a step seven. Coming in. Not at a thirteen.
Okay, thank you. Can can I just ask a follow-up question, Councilman Herring? Thank you for the. Your explanation on this. So if he was a new hire, but he had, say, thirteen years' experience. Will we still have to have him in that new higher range? The one to five?
Councilman Herring?
Hey, if that's what we got on there, new higher range. You could do that, or you could say, okay, we need to transfer and give him some of the transfer, but most most likely they're not gonna take it because they can go somewhere else.
Because I think I understood it to be like, you know, like a new hire was. Like equivalent to an entry level, somebody who has like one to five years' experience. Okay.
Come, Mr. President, ma'am?
Uh, yeah, sure. Then I have a follow-up question.
Okay, because that grade seven is specifically for the code enforcement um. Manager position. That 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 they have, if you look in here, look through this um spreadsheet and it has, you know. Code enforcement manager. And 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 the grade is, the range is one eighty-seven, one eighty to one eighty-nine. It's a grade seven. So that's specifically for the manager. That's where he should be coming in at, based on um. Based on um the scale that we have, that he set up, that was set up by the by us as a council and that we paid all this money for.
Thank you.
I just have one, one follow-up. The consultant we paid for this scale. Ms. Haber, uh, you said that it was the code enforcement managers' scale was incorrect. Did I hear that or did I not hear that?
It was funded uh in the budget at a grade ten. It was uh adopted by the council at a grade seven. And so between the time uh that the uh pay plan was adopted. Uh, and because it was an open position, we probably didn't go back and check. This is not purposely uh inflating. Uh, the salary. It was a mistake. The the mistake was that it was. On the uh grade ten scale at a step eight. Uh, and it was funded at that and that's uh. Uh, you know, was the endpoint of uh what we could authorize in terms of what was budgeted. We couldn't go. Uh, you know, uh, we couldn't uh go above that. That was the bottom line and it was a grade ten. So yes, it was a mistake. It should have been on the grade seven scale. Based on uh what was adopted by the council. And then we had a conversation with Mr. Eric Everettson. Uh, Karen and I to go over it and went through the survey. And realized that in the survey, uh, the numbers. Uh, for contact in the community was lower than probably it should have been. And it should have been a ten according to Mr. Everettson when we talked to him. But nonetheless. It's at a grade seven. We are recommending a salary in the grade seven. Uh, scale uh based on uh the person who is coming in and their experience with startup of community. Uh, activity in terms of code enforcement, registration of vacant lots, you know, I've made my case before, so I'm not gonna repeat it.
And and one more question. Does he have seven years of total experience or does, is that just seven years for a code enforcement, but his experience expands beyond the seven years?
He has seven years of code experience and prior to that he was in property management. So he has uh experience with managing uh rental properties.
Uh, and supervising staff?
Yes.
So his total experience is beyond seven years?
Likely, yes.
Mr. President?
Councilman Herring?
His code enforcement experience is seven years. That's what you're looking at. My thing is this, and let me just clear this up because the way it got down to a seven is because they came in as a ten. I sat down and talked to this consultant when I had to have a one-on-one because I needed some clarification, and I asked him, how is this grade at a ten? And the requirement is not for, is only a high school diploma. And he's like, oh, yeah, I didn't see that. Let me look at that. Okay, yeah, we gotta bring that down because it is only asking for a high school diploma. And it said degree preferred, and that's why I went down to a seven. It wasn't, it had nothing to do with, it was a mistake. It was that, I talked to this man when I sat down with him and I went over the scale with him. And I asked him about that position and why was it being graded so high when other people who have had, where degrees are required were so high? And then he looked at it, he's like, oh, yeah, that's a good question. I don't, I'm not sure why it's at a seven, I mean, it's at a ten. When only a high school diploma is required. And that's why he took it down to a seven, and that's how I got to a seven. Thank you.
Thanks for that. All right, I think uh Councilman Herring, oh. Just one more question to Councilman Herring, then we can close it out. Are you specifically recommending anything?
I would say, if he got seven years' experience, then he should be a step seven. He maybe want to kick him up to a step eight. But I don't think he should be getting no step thirteen. I mean, if you want to take him up to, I mean, he should be at a step seven, uh, is fifty-nine, four, seven, eight. And I, if you want to give him some extra extra year because of his property management experience, take him up to an eight. That was just where he was gonna be before. That they had to change that, change those um steps and change that grade. So I would do sixty-nine, six-five. And fall in line with the with the with the uh pay scale that we approved.
Okay, thank you. All right, um. So the only motion I have on the floor currently. Is that the current pay scale of. Which we have to modify the resolution is sixty-eight thousand nine nine seven. All right.
Nine, nine seventy-seven.
Oh, sorry, nine?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven?
Yeah.
Somewhere in there. Okay, sorry about that. All right, that's the motion that's on the floor. If there's no discussion.
Same, well, the motion is, one motion is on the floor.
The motion that's on the floor is the, is this resolution, which will include um. Uh, the sixty-eight thousand nine seventy-seven.
That's the motion that's on the floor right now that we're gonna vote on?
That's the, that was the motion that was first and seconded. That's on the floor that we brought the vote on.
Okay, I make the motion at this table until we get clarification on whe- whe- whether we can do this and that, based on what was approved by ordinance.
Is there a second?
Seconds.
Council Clerk, could you do a roll call, please, for the motion to table? Councilwoman Farid?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gion?
Yes.
Council?
Yes. Sorry, I was, yeah, I was guessing the word.
Councilman Herring?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jones?
No.
Council Vice President Ferguson? Council Vice President Ferguson?
I'm staying.
Council President? Farid? I'm staying as well.
Vote to the table passes.
All right, so let's put together a timeline here then, uh, if if. Since we have voted to table it and we're tabling it to do what exactly, Councilman Herring? Where do you go?
We need to, we need to clarify whether we can go off the pay scale that we approved. If we can go off, go off of what's not on our, on approved pay scale. Because it's too much confusion here. We, they advertised it as a ten and now it's a seven, but they want to keep the salary at the, at the. Grade ten range. So we need to clear, we need to clarify this and see if we can do that. It was advertised wrong, incorrectly. The range that was put on advertisement was incorrect. It was advertised with a grade ten and it should have been a seven. So that's misleading.
Mr. Curtis?
One, one second. Are you finished, Councilman Herring? Yes, Ms. Haber.
I do want to correct one thing. It was advertised at the beginning of the scale at a grade seven. And at the end of the scale, it was a a grade ten, seventy thousand five seventy-five was the grade ten. At the beginning, it was a seven. The beginning of the of the uh salary that was advertised. So we had a mixed bag. Yes, we had a mixed bag based on what was budgeted in the budget.
Ms. Haber, could you please, you know, send an email to the attorney? With the council copied, the entire council copied, uh, to explain what happened, uh, and to see if we can move forward. Uh, with um. How we should move forward. Uh, and and if there is discretion in the scale of seven. Uh, or whatever scale that, you know, it's legal for for him to be on. And I'll just ask that the, that the council remains flexible for a virtual meeting. Uh, so that we can move this along. So what I don't want to happen is this be delayed for another month. Uh, and we don't get the help that uh we need as a city. So. Uh, Ms. Haber, if you can do that, copy us, uh, and if he doesn't respond. Uh, uh, early, just ping him to have him respond to the entire council, not just to you. Uh, so that we all can be in the loop and that we can be uh flexible to have another virtual meeting to push this forward. Or move this forward, not push. Okay?
Okay.
All right, if that's the only item on the agenda, all hearts and minds clear from the council. All right, the citizens, thank you for joining our meeting. The time is eight twenty-two. This meeting is now adjourned. Thank you.
Everyone have a good night.